I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the only public, the ownership stands. On the nation of our land. Indivisible, the liberty and the justice for all.
We had no correspondence since our last meeting and we have no public hearings tonight. I don't see many people, but there is an opportunity at this moment for public comment if either of you have a comment? No? All right. Then we're going to move on to review of minutes. We have our January twenty-third regular meeting. And our February eighth budget workshop. I know Cindy and I collaborated and sent kind of a joint correction thing. Can you add some additional?
Joe, Joe, that is.
Right, right. And I'm going to finish my sentence and Joe, I looked this over. And I also looked at what were in our official minutes. We have to be really careful. I mean, agenda is regulated by New York State on our minutes. And this isn't the exact wording you use at the meeting, but what we have is a great opportunity tonight. Because we'll be talking about the policy. So if you'd like, you can read these statements into the record for tonight's meeting. All right?
That that's the email I sent the other day, not my correction of the minute. I sent, I sent an email about the policy itself several days ago.
No, this is about the minutes.
This is about the minutes. We're on the minutes.
Right. And so my my point was that if we didn't have a transcription, that didn't sound like what I said. So I was trying to correct the minutes to what I what I had said.
But this is obviously just, I would appreciate it if you would just read this statement, if you would like it on the record. The minutes do, I think, really reflect that you felt it should be data-driven analysis. And that you didn't you objected to the designation of the four spots of the cameras, et cetera. So I didn't really get the sense of what and that is the way the minutes were. So did you say there were some additional corrections? No? Okay. So with the corrections submitted, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the January twenty-third regular meeting and the February eight budget workshop?
Absolutely.
By Matt, second by Sydney, all in favor?
All right.
And we have several permit applications here. The first one is an application to use a village park, Pioneer Park on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three from three thirty P M until four thirty from Roberta Flunkett for the Bampton Morris Men for Morris Dancing. This is a group that has performed here for many years, dancing in the park. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one. When we waved the fee in the past.
Okay. We have, I think, for that, because it's sort of like our music on main. Where, you know, we let them perform and it's all part of making our downtown attractive. So so is there a motion to include waving the fee?
I'm like in the I make a question to approve is submitted into wave the sixty-five dollar use fee.
Second by Hannah, all in favor?
All right.
Next, we have Joe Syracuse at the Fenmore Art Museum. For the third year, we will be having a mural in Pioneer Park from May twenty-second until September fifteenth. He did note in his commentary that it will be a kind of unveiling event. So when was that? June third at ten A M. Any questions or comments? Not a motion?
Are we waving the motion?
Did we historically do this one?
I'll move the application and I will wave the fee.
We've never waved it and they aren't requesting it.
Well, we just, you know, the principle that if the Morris dances are going to entertain using the park, this entertains using the park. So I thought that was consistent.
Right. It takes a section of the park and we enjoy having it. It's for a much longer period, not flying all summer, et cetera. So is there a motion to approve the mural installation, Joe? So and second by Sydney, all in favor?
All right.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I see. We'll move on your additional agenda items. Jenna sent an email about this. You know, before our meeting, it did make last week's packet. This is kind of a standard thing to waive the thirty-day requirement for the liquor license, because otherwise it delays the whole process. They can't even begin filing their application to New York State for a liquor license until the thirty days have elapsed. So this is kind of routine that we, the board would be asked the village would be asked to waive the thirty days. You'll note that the property is it's kind of exciting to think we have something going back in there. That's the former Alex's, one of the nine. So
I just want to add one thing. I didn't provide you with a resolution. I'm seeing that the resolution does have a spelling error.
It says town?
No, no, it says for the applicant is supposed to be Monthing, not Monthing. So just write that. If it does report, I would request you put that in. What reform is very specific.
So we're leaving the H, is that what you were saying?
No, no.
N and Monthing. M O N T H A N G.
And it's spelled correctly.
That's actually spelled correctly here.
Yes.
It's spelled correct.
Or but not in the resolution.
Not in the resolution.
So there's two places where it'd be Monthing on there. The other thing I was going to say is number two on your resolution, the village board.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
I know you wear a bit of a hat.
No, I was, well, I was supposed to, that was nice. This is prepared by my staff down south in the scouts.
All right. So
May I just a detailed question? We have the trustees, but who do not you and Cindy participate in this?
You know, it is interesting because I was thinking that, you know what, Cindy, you and I could offer the motion and I'll offer the motion to waive the thirty-day notice period. And to make the resolution effective immediately. And if Cindy seconds, then we're on there, on the record. Otherwise, our names are not listed there. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
So that's everyone. So we'll send that. Thank you very much.
Very much. We will. I think we're being done right now. So we appreciate the board.
Absolutely. As I say, it's exciting to have this business in there.
Yes.
The other two things on our agenda and then our sort of financials. So we'll cover those under the finance then. All right. Then moving on, we are at the zoning enforcement officers' report. You have basically the summary of the zoning board of appeals and H R. Do we get the minutes from them?
I think earlier I did send out.
Before.
Planning board did make suggestions. They went out.
Got you. Okay, yes. And the planning board did not make, are there any things that anybody wants to comment on? If not, we'll accept the zoning enforcement officers' report. By Cindy, second by Cindy, all in favor?
All right.
And we are now at the police committee and I'll let you go. If you want to review anything in the report, the police committee report. If not, we'll move on to the draft policy for the cameras. We'll move on to the draft policy for the cameras.
So I I need that I made the corrections that we talked about last time and fixed the problems with the room and the walls. Will I take a credit? And you know, I think as we know, there is still not consensus necessarily on all aspects of this policy. My suggestion in this point is that we need to get public input so that we know how people are feeling. Clearly, we have lots of difference in the way viewpoints on the board itself. My guess is there are lots of different viewpoints in the public, but I think the only way that we're going to get a sense of what those are is to give the public the opportunity to comment.
So Joe, do you want to just read your statements so it gets in the minutes?
Well, yeah. What I'm if the proposal is for us to hold the hearing, I'm
You're willing to agree to a public hearing?
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I don't know that I need to speak to the character of the hearing.
Okay.
But I would be guilty.
So we have seen this policy several times and I thank everybody who worked on the input on it. I think it became a stronger policy with both the one time we ran it over the placal and got public input on it and the concerted efforts of the board over the past few months. So is there a motion?
I have a question. I'm still not sure. You mean by data and analysis? And that the cameras and the village will have a policing and public safety in the area which cameras would be installed. Are you implying that without previous previous activity, previous need for video records of that area that we can't sight a camera someplace?
Not previous video records of something that may have.
Previous records that that incident actually happened.
Yes, because I think, I think in order to take this an action of this cost and operation and maintenance and management that there should be a need for it. And we in the in the policy is drafted, I attributed that portion with we all considered was to say, we will have we will have to acquire data and evidence of incidents that would be ameliorated by the presence of cameras.
Specifically in the village is what you're saying?
Oh, yes, our, in our, in our failing way.
Okay.
No, I understand there's a lot of information that's coming from the asset security system and they are widespread. I don't know how much of any of their statistics apply.
I'll probably get the metaphor wrong. To me, this is like locking the barn door after the cows have escaped. I would, I, 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 I I would, I would accept the concept that we need to cite things, but not just based on our documentation, but based on similar activities that happen in similar jurisdictions.
Okay, to be clear, what I intended by that text in five A was that it be, we would collect information using those metrics. If there are others, people want to learn if we can do that. But I thought that was, that was our world. Our world is the statistics that come in from the Public Safety Committee every month about different kinds of incidents. So it seems to me that's our public safety concern and if they're occurring in a place in a manner that cameras could mitigate, then I consider it. But in the absence of that, just the idea of, hey, let's do cameras.
No, I don't think we have to have a lost child via disaster before we cite a camera that might pick up a lost child.
I mean, I'm just to Joe's point, which I to a certain extent, I agree with. I think that there should be at least a bit of data to back up the reason. I, having been heard of many police committee meetings, there's been a number of incidents specifically on Main Street. For example, you know, a car hitting another car and it is a hit and run and there's significant damage done and there's no way to sort of figure out what happened. And there's been multiple, especially during the summer, multiple incidents like that. So I do think that the data is there. It's just a matter of bringing it to the table.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We're really looking at page two, camera placement and the first four under camera placement stipulate four cameras and their location. The data at this point going forward is for the sighting of any future additional cameras.
Right.
So it's really to them, and which at this point hasn't been there.
And that's my point before.
Yeah, yeah.
I disagree with the four.
Yeah.
Not being subject to the same criteria. It, it, it to me, it undermines angenuity of a document to say we're going to do things without taking careful consideration.
And I think that's what Cindy was addressing that.
And Cindy is.
I do feel that there is data to back up those specific points. It might just be a matter of putting it together and back it.
And and I have asked for that for the last several months.
Obviously, we have some good discussions on this. At this point, I very much agree with Cindy. We got good feedback from the public the last time we proposed a draft policy and we amended accordingly. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing on this camera policy. For our, what would that be, March twenty-seventh meeting? Moved by Richard, second by Cindy, all in favor?
Right. I think a point to discuss, just as a special point first. The public input we have in the last hearing revealed to me that what the people were concerned about had little to do with what this policy would be able to do. We were talking about intersections where pedestrian accidents occurred, that were not part of this effort. We were talking about camera cars going too fast and having cameras that would catch beating cars. So all I'm saying, and I won't belabor this or present it. I will say.
It's just a different point.
I, I, I will say that the the concern about this policy is that it is a solution in search of a problem. So I look forward to the public hearing to hear what the people have to say about whether something like this will actually what they're pitching about.
Yeah, I do think, just in comment on that, I do think it did reflect, because one of the comments we heard was that out of our police reform plan, we were community policing type format. And so they didn't want people sitting in the office looking at monitors. They wanted them on the street. And I think that got incorporated well into this proposed policy. But we'll get more feedback next time.
So we'll call a question?
I thought I did.
We haven't voted.
No, no, I said I wanted to discuss it after the second.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So that's it? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
So everybody's hands are up.
Moving on. There was a note in the police committee about increasing the fines for blocking a fire hydrant fire access to two fifty.
Yes.
Is it a hundred now that's been confirmed in all law?
I think it's a hundred now confirmed.
Yeah, we discussed that last time, several months ago. It was supposed to be a hundred in the software program. So that's what we advise the police to change it to because they have a lower. But we discussed change to.
Okay, but we need Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Before you make a motion, can I ask a question?
Good.
And I would love, I, I, it sounds like you all have seen a list of all of the the fines that are associated with various types of parking violations. I would love to see that list. I don't know if it exists.
I think we kind of reviewed it before. We certainly can. We kind of reviewed it before when we increased and established the law for blocking the fire department driveway.
I don't remember seeing a complete list.
Of every infraction in the
Of the parking violations.
Okay, all right. Well, that would mean.
I remember seeing the complete list.
I don't think, I don't think you reviewed it.
Yeah. Okay, so next month we can, as said, the police committee provide a summary of all the ones that are currently in.
Yeah, I think it probably exists on somewhere in the ticketing process. When I'm in a court, I'll see it. It'll say, you know, with the parking outside the line. You know, like in proper parking and it'll say fine seventy-five dollars. Where do you think this list would be?
It would be in the passport. And then, yes, what basically what they would need to do is export all of the information, which is really easy.
The police department has that.
Export, yeah.
The police department has that because they're the ones who inputted it to export. So whether it comes down.
I think potentially a few things on, they changed on the passport app. Because if we propose that we change one of the recent, the blocking of the fire.
That.
That they changed it on the app. So they don't have that written out on whatever list they import. So you have to then re-export whatever data they have on the app or the software. It should be pretty easy. And then we can all get a ready copy.
Perfect. Make sure that we get that.
Thank you.
So at this point, we have not set a public hearing on changing this law.
I mean, if we want to, you know, we could certainly do that. It would just help me to know how this fee relates to what could be two dozen other fees.
All right. So would you like to wait on it?
I can go either way. I, yes, I would prefer to wait because there might be others that we need to be.
When doing one bell swoop?
Yeah.
All right. So is that a matter of the public safety thing?
All right.
Motion. Motion to accept the police committee report? Oh, well, we have fire coming up. So that's even more important.
Right.
Some things. We've got a lot of changes there.
All right, fire department. I'll take what's in front of me first. This is not part of the meeting. This is the fire district service award program. Print data on who gets points and who doesn't is here as part of the record. I believe that actually falls under under, I actually don't know what the lowest thing.
This is our, yeah, we've got our low staff is the next thing that we're going to be certifying.
So I mean, the low staff report, which is not on the, so there was no business on the department E M T, no, the president had no report. There were fifty-eight E M P calls. One was a critical care transport to Albany that thankfully worked out well. The Mike Mike Simons met with Robert O'Brien of the county, discussed issues related to for previous problems with jurisdiction and coverage. Also, we found out that there was problems with the county being able to maintain the service that they started. They did not, they found that it not generate the points that they expected it to. Year calls have been relatively light. Cooperstown Volunteer Fire Department was in compliance with state. All state required reports. In March, there's going to be a review of another aerial truck in Schenectady, I believe. And I believe Martin, you're working on a memorandum of understanding with with the air, air, air met, what is it again? What's the name of the air transportation system? Which contract, you don't, they told me that they discussed with you getting a contract between.
Lightning? Lightning. I believe I was on Main Street walking somewhere and then one of them came up to me and said, we gotta get in touch with you. We go over. I, I said, okay.
That was, that was the intended. I'm sorry.
That's a legal office.
All right. Anyway, there was an offer to the emergency squad of three hundred fifty dollars to take the empty truck to the helipad. I don't quite completely understand that, but they needed a contract. Obviously, they haven't approached.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's the report.
Who's up?
Mike, Mike Simmons.
I will name.
What?
All right. So that's the fire committee report. At this time annually, we review the fire year, in this case, two thousand twenty-two load staff. And remember, this is our length of service award program that we have for our volunteer fire and EMS. Just to update you, if you recall, we hired a new sort of company. We moved from Pennplex to Firefly. Firefly has been really great about staying connected to the department members. And unfortunately, about a year ago, and we didn't even realize it for about six months, the individual who had been handling the low sap for the fire department within the fire department had moved and was not doing it. So we really need to recognize Walter Hogan. Firefighter who's really stepped up to the plate, has done a phenomenal job of assembling all the records for two thousand twenty-two and completing this report. At this point, we have had the opportunity to look it over. And we as the village board, because this low sap is obviously taxpayer money that we have in a fund for our volunteers. We as a board need to certify these members and the service credits that are there. Once we do this, Walter has already posted much of this, but he will again post it for thirty days. If it's a Benny firefighter disagrees and says, I actually have more points than that. They can sort of file an appeal on it. So is there a motion to approve the So is there a motion to approve the, um? And again, this is interesting. Someone who makes it will be signing there and, uh, someone's a second to. Um, is there a motion to approve the low staff, um, certification? Right, Richard Sternberg, uh, seconded by Sydney and all in favor. And I have to conclude it on that then.
And, uh, we know.
And Cindy's abstaining.
I noticed on that that twenty one of the seventy seven members on the roster are eligible this year. I don't know how that.
If you're asking what, then do we have a problem with participation? The answer is yes.
And also this year, as I said, Walter has done a great job and he recognized there were some ways. In which the record, the established sort of point systems were not. Equitable to everybody, shall I say. And, um, you have had the opportunity to review the two. Repose proposed changes. There are numbers five and six because in our total low set policy, that's where these particular. Um, components. One, the attendance at meetings at twenty point maximum. You can read the current. The additional proposed change is, um. Or squad captain that all firefighters and or EMS personnel are expected to attend. In other words, there's recognition. And it wouldn't fall in a miscellaneous category. Again, Walter has done a fabulous job with this. He has spoken with an attorney, Mark Stevens at the New York State Comptroller's Office. And, uh, who performs low staff audits. I will say that Mr. Stevens said, this is so refreshing to have a fire department and a firefighter contact us. Usually we're finding they did something wrong, but you're being so proactive. So again, we're very well served. By Walter on this. Um, it was reviewed by me and, um, and it was also discussed with the village attorney. So that is the one change. The other one is. Um, participation in department responses, fifty points maximum. You can read what it currently is. Um. And the change will be for calls for both fire and EMS members responding. Border vehicle accidents, structured fires, the member will be awarded credit for the activity they perform, fire or EMS. But cannot receive. Credit for both, even if they perform both. And again, this was discussed with, um, New York State Comptroller's Office and the village attorney, et cetera. So I will make a motion that those two proposed changes to the low set point categories. Beginning for two thousand twenty three, they're not retroactive. Um, be approved. Second by Richard. All in favor? And moving on, double day committee.
Um, I think. If my memory serves me, the only thing that there was questioning on was, um, the mountain athletic club. Has put in an application to play on April thirtieth and they're requesting that the village leave the helmet requirement. And the double day committee was kind of split about this. Um, some of them felt that we shouldn't leave it. Some of them felt that. We should get them to sign a waiver, making sure that the village is not. Sorry.
How old are the participants? Are they adults?
They're adults, yeah.
No, I mean, we can come up with a waiver, um. Waivers are just a little better than the paper there. But if we can come up with a waiver, if that's the pleasure of the board. If it's important to them, they don't like playing the tennis.
So they play like the old.
Town ball.
We can come up with a, if they're happy going in, they want to take that risk. I have waivers.
Jenna, they would still, they still have to provide their, um. Million dollars. Right.
This is because of.
I'm unhappy, but.
Right, they they don't wear helmets anywhere else where they play, so they don't, I don't even.
They they wear uniforms that actually are close to be appropriate or identical to the teams. From the that era where they have photographs, so. You know. Do I agree with it?
If it makes you feel better based, they'll play with the soft balls.
They do? Okay, didn't know that.
Should we, um, have a, let's have a motion on that then, that, um, a waiver will be. Drafted for which each team would have to sign in, um, for consideration that they would not wear helmets.
And each and each individual.
Yeah. Is there someone wanting to make that motion? Move it by Joe, second by Cindy, all in favor? And they have a second request there about the merchandise.
Oh, yes, and they would like to vend merchandise, which. The committee was all for if they do that.
And pay the appropriate fee. Do we have one for?
That's what I wanted to share about.
Team renting a field and then.
Because typically they're, they bend in the parking lot, right? So they would pay that parking lot vendor fee. But I don't know that there's precedent for some of them selling.
Where are they gonna bend in? You mean they'll take a parking place or now?
I think they want to bend on.
But this is not what I'm aware of.
Like. At the field, not in the parking lot. So the other thing is, I don't.
I think I'm looking it up. I have it on my computer. I think our law does allow for that.
Okay.
But I I know that it allows for it to parks. I just want to check and make sure that probably the field is included in that. Okay. As to the fee, I. But I don't want to potentially commit it.
Well, they've made a point about not wearing helmets to be authentic. Are they going to be using authentic food of the nineteenth century?
I don't think they're.
I think it's merch.
Oh, merch.
Yes, so general vending includes a lot of the vending maybe forbidden in village parks. Excluding Council Rock Park and in public areas adjoining public buildings and adjoining double day fields.
Excluding Council Rock, they said.
Yeah, excluding, yeah. But in public areas, joining public buildings and adjoining double day field.
Alright, so it's just a matter of asserting the fee, the vending, what that vending fee would be. So, Monica, do you want to make a motion to allow the selling of merchandise? Um, completion, uh, conditional on the completion of a vending permit and paying the appropriate fee?
So.
By Connor, second by Sydney, all in favor?
We don't just answer a question if we skip, I didn't raise a hand, but I got on the old business Atlantic, the, what happened?
They, when they came for their visit, they were just kind of surprised at the lack of amenities that we were able to offer because they're used to. Being at a field where, you know, there's a ticket taker and there's. Things available to them, so. To come for one day, they just felt there was too much work on their end, unfortunately.
Um, it was also, you know, they they, um, were going to be selling tickets and I think they were aware that this. A day in May in Cooperstown might not generate.
Yeah.
The revenue that they thought it might.
Yeah, I think they were surprised to hear that. The population that comes to like the Hall of Fame game is not like the local. Village person. I mean, obviously some people do, but I think once we told them the population of Cooperstown. Scott Monador gave some facts about.
Cooperstown is not actually a baseball town.
Right, so. Or.
Basketball.
Or we're used to being able to go to double A field to watch baseball without, hey.
Right.
That's, we promote that.
Yeah.
Um, is there another action item? Is it, um? The live streaming? That's interesting. Where is this high school game? Uh, who's playing in this high school game on April one? Do you know?
Um, I had, uh, bring the double day field notes with me, but the teams were listed. Um. Apparently, this is something that happened, like the Hall of Fame livestream, so the committee didn't think we needed to bring it to the board, but is that not the case? If it's already done.
I kind of imagine it would probably be an issue, but actually it was just on here. The committee re. Um, it is unclear if this request will require court of trustee approval.
I mean, so does this relate to? Like. Alan Landor is our photographer and he pays us a fee, you know, like, and do we need a similar sort of agreement with D B production group for live streaming?
Who is live streaming it? The D B production group, are they affiliated with one of the school teams?
One of the school teams has hired them to do the live stream.
You know, we had this event yesterday when the tiny from the Hall of Fame came over. He was giving a lot of advice about. These live streaming events and having to get sort of disclaimers and waivers because a lot of people. Who participate in these things don't know that they're, or ultimately want their image to be up on the grid. There are all sorts of issues I have never thought about, particularly with younger people too. So I don't know what are. Factors in, not that it's our responsibility, but I just don't know. What this is all about.
I know that Marsha replied to an email. I'm just gonna see if I can find it really quick. But is there a, that's the board of it?
I think it's a great idea, but I do think we probably need some sort of. Contract for going in our facility.
And I think you guys should be controlling that and some of those issues that Joe raised. I mean, we might want to address that, but it seems to me that particularly again, if there are minors. Usually you can film someone that's out in public, you know, the, the. The cameras you guys discuss, if I'm walking down the street, I could, you know, you can film me out. It's, I'm in public. But there's always an issue about minors being photographed. In their consent or really understanding. That's where I always see the issue, so.
So there is an email thread going back and forth between, it looks like. The schools. Um, and the production company. And it appears that. There is permission from both superintendents.
I guess if they're willing to assume responsibility, make that request and. So.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're taking on the. Any liability for filming, then I guess it's. I don't see, and I don't think that's probably the same thing to photographer. When I've been there, he's just. Kind of drawing people aside, taking a picture in front of the double date, not filming again.
Yeah.
At least I've never seen him.
No, I think you just take stills.
Stills, yeah. I, I mean, I think if the schools are saying they're willing to take the responsibility. Then it's it's still up to this board. Could you guys control that field?
Um. I think this, they have hired D B D P production group. D P production group should at least get in touch with the village, don't you think, um, about?
Well, that's what he did. He has been emailing back and forth with Marsha.
Oh, he has been connected with Marsha, so. We will just follow up with Marsha, all right, Jenna? We found that one, we will.
I would take from the village's perspective, if the village is amenable to allowing it. We may want at least to have some documentation from either maybe D B's already collected it. Or from the schools involved, from their superintendent just saying, we. We accept the responsibility for the consequences of filming again. It kind of solves last term.
The only other thing I had a question, I was wondering, what's going on with Bud Fowler's plaque? At double day, was there actually a thought to put? The plaque in the whole day or do the better, what?
No, I think there was a misunderstanding there.
Okay.
But I think the Hall of Fame has said that they're not. They weren't interested in putting a plaque there, but I think. I need to talk more with Scott about, I think we were talking about like a sign on the building itself, not.
Were they, were they thinking we actually wanted the Bud Fowler Hall of Fame?
I think so.
I was just amazed how could that request even come, I'm like, really?
I was thinking because we do have a Bud Fowler plaque. Out of the first blade, first base bleachers, and I couldn't figure out why the Hall of Fame would want it.
Yeah.
Instantly thought it was the actual Bud Fowler plaque or we were getting a reproduction or something to the public pavilion. I didn't know.
That would not be a bad.
Yeah. Uh, unfortunately, that was brought up in like the last second and I had to run to a doctor's appointment, so that one I can definitely circle back. At the next committee day.
We are going to have a board about what's foul, foul, aren't we? You know, some signs or some.
And he was saying was the Hall of Fame already has a great. Display there committed to Bud Fowler and they don't necessarily want anything from there and. Down at the field because they want to encourage people to go to the Hall of Fame to see that. So.
That doesn't. That doesn't mean that we can't do something to explain who he was.
We have, I mean, there's a, there's a.
There's a whole display face there and it always gets covered with tax.
I mean, at the, at the field.
You could even say, you know, Bud Fowler whose plaque appears in the, you know, Hall of Fame down the street.
Yep. Good idea, Warren.
I was confused because once we named it the Bud Fowler Pavilion, I thought we were going to use a little bit of the Hall of Fame extra cheese. Because they actually do on our thirty nine, they're the ones who don't, the sign, the circular one that hangs up there. And I thought we were going to get some. Sort of artistic feedback on this, a potential sign for the pavilion.
Yeah, I think we need to have a sit down with the Hall of Fame and kind of sort out what.
Yeah.
Because I think there is definitely confusion.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments on the committee minutes? If not, question.
I was only going to. Remark that we need to see an actual application for this demand of venues. It seems like there's a lot of so.
Martha has, um, been coordinating that.
In that paragraph.
Yeah.
That we haven't seen yet.
Yeah, from what I.
The span of animus will not be applying to us. The hall is.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. And they have worked with Marsha to reserve the dates, yeah. Alright, a motion to accept the double day committee then. Uh, so move second by Joe, all in favor? Moving on to buildings.
I'm happy to answer any questions about the minutes, um. I guess I was notified this morning that there was an issue, uh, with the elevator. Was it last night?
Who are the, uh, friends of village library?
Yeah.
It was a program at three o'clock. And what happened was he became screaming in and after he uses the elevator, it all out.
And people were traveling inside of it?
Everybody who was on it got out, so but they, it, some people had to get out of it. I was there and some of the people did have to get out of the elevator, which they were able to do.
Okay.
But then Mitch and Ellen. Came over and Terrell and another officer, they all sort of reset the elevator.
Was it a matter of being being overweight?
It wasn't too much weight. It's apparently designed for residential use and the oil. The pneumatics of it overheated and the thing stalls out, gets out of alignment. And it had to be reset. A couple of times and, uh, last time. It was unsuccessful, so the world doctors, it was stranded up on the third floor and. I think, uh, the department came and brought a chair to.
The fire department, a stair chair, and they had to be.
Yeah, and that was, so the event ended around four, four ten, they didn't get out there till well after five. So I I don't know what it means for that. Fixer because we had seventy five, I did a head count, we had seventy five people at this event. A lot of folks are. Older, most still want to use the steps. But, um.
So I understand Mitch has been in touch with the company and we're waiting for more information to. So I understand Mitch has been in touch with the company and we're waiting for more information to.
There seems to be an inherent problem, I mean, we knew it was a residential when this bid was put in because. This is an historic building and the size of the shaft of.
It was the only one that would fit.
That's correct.
So we don't have any other option.
Though there have, though I will say, this one seems to have more issues than than our older one at times. This is a particular issue where the oil heats up too much and when that happens, it just shuts the elevator down. No one gets trapped in it, but it basically would not fall back down. There is a process and a sequence that I think our police department knows now, et cetera. For bringing the elevator back down and then resetting it, and we did get it back on the fourth floor. Did someone go down in it?
Right, so we did get. That was one trip, but subsequently after everybody left, it broke down again. And it couldn't, you know, and Terrell went through the protocol that Mitch had shown him and it still didn't work, so.
It now is just because Terrell missed one of the protocol steps, which involved a second switch.
Okay, well, I I guess the thing is, if it's that. It's, you know, there's an implied warranty of fitness for a particular purpose and.
It says he has a email and a call into the company for a solution that he's, he suggested a. There might be some circular links that can be added to the.
I suppose we need a sign, please do not use the elevator, I think absolutely untrue.
Well, I made that announcement for that, I mean, it was really one or two uses and all of a sudden.
I'm saying, yeah.
If we're gonna have.
You don't have a handicap, you don't have a handicap placard on your car, you can't use the elevator.
It's just that the, a lot of people need the elevator and that's a great room, we need it accessible.
I agree. Well, I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, I don't know, you're aware and I focused on you, but I might. And uh no until uh Joe texted me, I so.
Well, and and there's a related issue that I heard, I don't know if I mentioned to you, but in in the process of waiting, there was a need for the restroom and the restroom. Is not equipped with grab bars, so it's very difficult for older people to move over and they couldn't, in fact, the cleaning woman who happened to be there. Have to help out, so we might consider grab bars for the upstairs, it's around bathroom and maybe a taller.
So I think that this is contributing also to a larger discussion about the building, that will proceed over time, uh is an issue of accessibility. From the elevator to what you just mentioned about the restrooms to um some uh requesting questions about potentially uh a ramp. Which I know there are logistical issues to have to do that because of the nature of. How much ramp there has to be in uh correlation with the the height of the 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 steps and the porch, um but you know. I think it's really important that we do, we can to make sure that this building's accessible, both to get in and get out of. Um the idea of um uh folks being stuck on the third floor for an extended period of time, whether it's a half hour. Or two hours or whatever it might be, uh is, you know, really problematic, uh so it'll be on the list for the buildings committee. Going forward to, uh I mean, to stay on top of it. I think it's important.
Definitely. I just have a quick question, when we purchased this elevator, did we know that it was designed for residential?
It replaced residential, the shaft, there's no way for March to shaft in this building. So as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, I really don't um know.
But no one would have guessed that it had its residential specifications, it wouldn't work after two rides.
Well, I mean, this wasn't done haphazardly, it was part of a very extended planning process with professionals involved, so. I think it's probably worth a call to learn to know if they're seeing this in other locations, because you know, it it couldn't be. As much as we're blaming the elevator, but there's actually something wrong in issue. Can't be the only historic building that uses a residential elevator because of.
So I think it's worth reaching out to that architect as as well as the company that.
Well, I think even a residential, it doesn't make sense to use it once or twice. If we had an elevator in our home that we used fifty times a day that in the funeral home. Or war, we're chasing each other and it never didn't work.
Like seventy years old.
It's a little.
It's a passenger, that's not.
Thing is, residential home swells uh billions of dollars and they're holding their Hamptons parties, they want their elevators to work too. To say it's a residential elevator, that's a problem. There's a warranty issue there.
Thank you, Cindy. Alright, anything else on buildings?
Cindy, just about the art association's um discussion uh on the windows, that's a bit we need to bring forward here. Or is it just for a point of information?
It's a point of information at this, at this juncture, I think soon it will be more than a point of information, but um we have talked about upstairs. Um adding a, we've talked about screens for many, many times, um but adding a unit that could be. Fitted with a screen during summer and a storm window during the winter would be beneficial to all users of the upstairs space. So more to come, I think, once we, once we have a sense of what the Arts of Vision Board has approved in their own spending and.
And usually we um approve it when there's an actual paid cost figure, because then we can prorate it over their course of their lease.
Yeah, one of the questions I have about that is I know we've already entered into some of these rebate arrangements on rent. For the work company and and other things of yard association, are we ahead of or behind? The gain in terms of um the the income we're getting to meet our operating and maintenance expenditures. That we're depending on paying for with the rent we're receiving. And yet these backflow improvements are being made with the with the rent, so.
They weren't so much stipulated in the Art Association, but in our, our lease with the library. Um which had a grant and some significant investment in this building that is actually written into the contract of. You know, they actually aren't paying for a certain period of time until it's paid off and then theoretically next year. But there have been additional expenditures which were approved by this board, so that is being refined. Yes, the Art Association actually takes it, it's not, they don't pay rent for six months while something gets paid off. They they are paying like fifty percent rent and the balance of that fifty percent is taken against some of the improvements they've made. And those figures um are all with the treasurer, so because she receives the rent checks, so they are confirmed.
And and Joe, one of the things that we have found is that the Art Association can often undertake a project. Faster and at a lower cost than the village.
So it's a win-win, civilians. Is there a number to accept with it?
Can I just bring up cleaning RFP, I put that on there because the end May twenty, end May twenty 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 three. So I just want to have a quick discussion.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I moved it a little bit, I slowed down.
I just want to forget about it, because we currently only have them until May. And we have not received any other RFPs. So.
I know you've been handling that, who Cindy, is there?
I mean, one, one of the things we've been wondering, um we have issued an RFP for companies. To do our cleaning, the company provides the insurance, the cleanings, the supplies and. We have not had much success, as Jenna suggested, getting people to respond to this, we wonder. It might be better to hire an individual, um it would not be a full-time position, really. Although at one point in the past it was, um and we would provide the cleaning supplies. And and we need to do some serious cost benefit on that.
Yeah, I mean, the contract um as is, which doesn't include everything we wanted to and. Has been subpar, uh in my opinion, uh is, you know, twenty four thousand dollars annually, uh and. Is it better to just allocate those funds instead of into a contract allocating it into a paid position? And so there are, there's a little more accountability uh than I think what we, what we see now. Um and if we can do it for a similar cost, then it is uh something that I think that we should pursue.
So basically a full-time janitorial position for the village ball?
Yeah, it would be part-time and um, so if I understood, it would also include. The firehouse, and this is separate from. Double, remind me, okay.
But can you put together sort of those figures and proposals since we're working on the budget now, it would be applicable to.
Yeah, we try to do that for Wednesday and tomorrow for the.
Yeah, definitely, the ninth.
And Jenna, making a decision on that by board meeting next month, I, we're, we're good. Okay, okay.
Well, if we um. We have them until when? The end of May, so we would be in our next fiscal year, so really if we. Find that information and get it into our budget, we're, we're in good shape, it's not like there has to be. The the decision will be on what we put in the budget right at one.
As as we look over the figures, you know, it'll have to be um. Competitive, you know, the the rate for cleaners and stuff, where it's at thirty dollars an hour on average, um so just, so that's in everybody's mind.
You know, it's also, can I say one thing, because I had suggested, there's a local company that. A local business that really was very impressed with their cleaner and I had provided that name. I think if you're a sort of almost a sole proprietorship and you're confronted with a municipal RFP. I'm like, oh, I'm not gonna sit here and do this, so that person didn't even. Reply with anything, and I wonder if it could be, I don't know. Does it have to be quite so technical for hiring someone that had a business with this? Couple buildings as big as ours had a a cleaner that was working very effectively.
I mean, ninety percent of the RFP was what has to be done, so it's not super technical and that needs to be in there, how often do toilets?
Yeah, but then they have to kind of say, I will, you know, it.
Oh, I, I, despite how comprehensive we have in. Seen a lot of those tasks included in our expectations. Accomplished.
Right, right, so I understand that you want those in there, that's really a job description, I think. When you request for proposal, it's like I'm coming back and this. Now maybe, it's a little more technical in some respects, you don't think so?
And in this case, it's really not super technical.
Okay, alright, that was the feedback I got from the one that was uh a cleaner for someone else.
I mean, we can, maybe there's a way to simplify the language of it, but I think the expectations are what they should be, um and hopefully.
But why is that a job description and not a request for proposal, an RFP, because an RFP does connote a little.
Because we tried to do exactly what you're saying, make it so anyone could respond to it, seeing the things that needed to be done on a weekly.
So you called it a job description.
No, we call it, it has to be an RFP, I mean, we're municipality, we can.
Kind of a service.
You gotta get a written proposal. I imagine if you follow all the rules, maybe call it something else, is there some information that Kurt has been asked to give that makes it more difficult?
Well, when they sign their name and they give a dollar figure, right, and that's, that's basically all they're doing.
To read it over and say, I will do all this work and this is.
They just sign it, give a dollar.
And they have provided insurance.
Some references, yeah.
And yeah, we try to make it as some of the users are friendly as possible and still meet the requirements. And so that's why hiring somebody may be easier, right, because. A sole proprietor might be interested in a fifteen to nineteen hour a week job. Where they might not want to enter into a, oh, yeah, what we're doing isn't working, so.
Well, we meet um uh Monday next week, so we'll take it to the committee and we'll have something next month.
Great question, so when, or right now, when we have someone coming in in the building, is it one person? That's coming in, sometimes yes, sometimes there are more than one person.
Cause I think that also might be something to consider, I remember this is a job that could be done by one person. And if there might be reason to think about.
Well, I had a daughter last night during this elevator, I can say, the cleaning crew was here, a man and a woman, and they were busy cleaning around and. So there were two here last night.
Alright.
I think we should just get her home by the beat down with it.
Alright, so a motion to accept the building. By Max, second by Sydney on favor. Moving on to the finances.
In your package, you have your rate of service award program locally stated, and in the office is the annual statement. Uh the bank reconciliation account reviews for January were completed by your finance committee. And as to the county sales action for it, we're packing, for December, over December twenty one to twenty two, we're up nearly nine percent. Um and year to date, we're up about ten point seven percent. And I'm on pace to exceed the three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in revenue that I did for this fiscal year. And could be substantially more than sixty or seventy, depending on things continuing to grow, but that's. That's good. Um in the village office is the security group stage, finish the disclosure back and we have to file, uh report on our village patents. And UNISTAT, the Municipal Finance Advisory Service filed the required, well, continue. Uh about our bonds and has submitted in an invoice for thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for its services. I think we approved a form of that invoice.
Second by Sydney on favor.
We have uh an invoice from Hawkins, Bellafield and Wood. Of four thousand nine hundred and fifty three dollars, they are the village bond council, wishing you an opinion, approving opinion. For the village of bond anticipation note, uh twenty twenty two, series A, I move to approve the payment.
Second by Matt on favor.
For our police department's body camera, we have an invoice from Exxon Enterprises with about twenty eight thousand dollars. One half of that is funded by a federal grant from the Justice Department, I move to approve the payment of that invoice.
Maybe I've heard that last one, I was gonna say, maybe already.
Because we kind of have to pay it in order to submit to the grant. We can approve it again, alright, we'll do it.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll double check with Deb, I think she put it there.
Just approve it just in case.
I'm sorry, how much do you say it's for, Joe?
It's twenty eight thousand dollars, half of which is uh subsidized by a federal.
She got the grant already. Okay, but there is a motion, let's just do it again, okay, second by. All in favor?
Um we have two invoices from NICE, one of the one of the in tonight's packets. One is for eighty four dollars and forty two cents, and the other is forty five dollars and seventy two cents for energy use of three mile boat. Um these, these bills were forwarded by Luke Hader, to whose meter that usage is recorded. I move to approve the payment of those orders.
Motion made by Joe, second by uh Sydney on favor.
We have a vendor, a senior computer expert who uh provides computer services. And maintenance services to the garage, his annual agreement is up, uh. And it's proposed for approval in the amount of six hundred dollars. Um I move that we approve the payment of that amount and also through the execution of the associated contract.
Motion made by Joe, second by Cindy on favor.
Um for our lease payment on the village streets, we have a San Pender Bank invoice to be another eighty seven thousand and sixty seven dollars. I move to approve the payment of that invoice.
Motion second by Matt on favor.
The Utica National Insurance Group has submitted an invoice of the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and sixty dollars for payment due March one. I move to approve the payment of that invoice.
Motion made by Joe, second by. Richard on favor.
I do have a comment on this, in the invoice, there is an option for paying a minimum amount. I do have a comment on this, in the invoice, there is an option for paying a minimum amount. Um in this case, sixteen hundred fifty six dollars and. The question I have is if we're going to go to this, we are going to this money market. Um. Uh opportunity to create, to you know, pay an interest, earn interest on our funds, do we want to reconsider? Going forward, how we play these invoices, not only making minimum payments, keep more money in our accounts. For interest earning.
You know, I don't think this is enough to really.
Worry about it.
Worry about it, um and you know, if instead you you would have. Our treasurer's office having to do.
Repeating.
You know, yeah, cutting that many more checks, it's just a time factor too, I think. That's a process that we found effective is paying.
Joe, this minute will do a monthly.
It was for the period, but I don't, I don't have to do that kind of work.
Because it's it's, if it's monthly. The uh paying whole balance is nineteen eight forty and paying it by month is nineteen eight seventy two.
It it they do charge one for monthly.
Yeah, it uh uh it looks like they're only charging thirty two dollars, that's what's amazing to me. All right. I I hear you.
Okay, but I I I, so no change in that, we'll continue. As we are currently paying the twenty one. Um for our annual firefighter counter benefit insurance, uh we have an invoice for four thousand five hundred eighty two dollars and fifty cent.
Motion by Joe, second by Sydney. Over here, for fire, for public safety, um all in favor.
And we, Utica National Insurance submitted another invoice for three hundred fifty dollars for Jeep and ambulance uh coverage, I move you approve the payment of that.
Uh yeah, um additional cleaning and amount of reading, just in case you're wondering when we review the Utica National Insurance. Um it became apparent there were there were two vehicles that did have the full insurance on it, and it seemed like they should, so that's why that amount is separate and it seemed. Um totally worth it, so motion made by Joe, second by Cindy on favor.
Uh and we have some capital project invoices to pay, ones in the. Nine package, yeah, but I'll start with what's on the list, the double day, double day field, Delaware Engineering, third base building, Richard Building, number. Twenty two dash twenty dash twenty dash one, and the amount is six thousand four hundred fifty one dollars and fifty nine cents, I need to pay that.
Second by Sydney on favor.
I moved, we we have a, we have a double day field, Delaware Engineering, third base, Richard Building, invoice number twenty two. Twenty five fifteen dash two, in the amount of eight thousand two hundred four hundred dollars and fifty cents, I need to pay that.
Second by Hannah on favor.
We have a salt shed, uh particularly designed, invoice number twenty three dash zero nine one six hundred thirty five dollars, I need to pay that.
Second, second by Sydney, Cindy on favor.
Uh for double day field, GT grandstands, invoice number two zero nine zero nine eight. In the amount of six thousand dollars, I need to pay that.
Second by Hannah on favor.
For late front, our Delta Engineering invoice number eleven, the amount of one thousand seventeen dollars and fifty cents, I move with payment.
Second by Sydney, Cindy on favor.
In the wastewater treatment plant, Delaware Engineering invoice number nineteen dash sixteen thirty seven dash seven zero, in the amount of seven thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars and fifty cents. I need to pay that invoice.
Motion by Joe, second by Cindy on favor.
Uh double day field, Bonoff. Confident contract number two, pay after number thirteen, in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, I need to pay that.
Second by Sydney. What was I, yeah?
Uh for the third floor window restoration, H K K, invoice two hundred thirty five fifty seven, in the amount of four hundred ninety dollars, I need to pay that.
Second by Cindy, all in favor. We had a couple additional items, um right, um on our. Additional items, agenda items, I believe we have the Richardson Window Works invoice. In the amount of twenty forty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, this explore the third floor window restoration. Uh who could we pay that, second by Cindy, all in favor. And I think.
We did the, we did a nice.
We did, and I said, the other action under finance is we need to approve. Uh a three thousand dollar um services contract with Delaware Engineering. To complete an application through CFA to fund and uh ionon flow and infiltration. Um data, to assemble data, so we can apply for a grant. The grant would be for an actual ionize study, which could be. Quite expensive, but would allow us to reduce our stormwater. I have more information if you would like on it.
Is that the Hoffman Lane project or something?
Is that for the what?
Hoffman Lane project or?
Um no, this is throughout the building. Yeah, it's an engineering planning grant program, EPG, it's a sister program of, you know, clean water, et cetera. The state revolving fund, SRF, it would be applied through the um CFA process and it's. That, one of its, um the type of projects they. They fund include, please want to be advanced, but we're literally clear that they um do fund collection system improvements and.
I'd like a motion to approve the gas balance to submit that application.
Cindy, I second by Joe on favor. You wanna?
Yeah, continue with personnel and then you have a couple of items. So um with personnel, the overkill in and using out, see they're available for you, and I think, and I think the um. The suggestion of Jenny, you certainly started me with that comment, it was a good idea.
Yeah.
Um there are questions, we can follow the suggestion. Um and then for the uh. Change transaction inquiries on employees um is available for review, and the treasurer's office will start to see associated information there, so we don't generally. Now, we have uh also the need to um approve ad- advertising for lifeguards, two caretakers, a boat steward, and three seasonal laborers.
I'm I'm sorry, we, yeah, we don't, no, we don't need to do the boat steward, our um. Employee from last summer who was excellent has already come aboard and uh, so that will save us having to advertise that, but um. Yes, you then you can do the others, the lifeguards, two caretakers, and three seasonal labors.
And then it should be done on grocery, we have to do the.
Um you can do it, yeah, that's fine.
Is there an additional caretaker position that we're needing a caretaker?
That's a. That's a.
So I move the uh approval to advertise for those positions.
Second by Cindy on favor.
Um I moved back to finance, I wrote the approval of the abstracts and transfers, and that are still in your packet.
Second, I'm like Cindy on favor.
And you have the remaining items for review, the abstract, the fence payment report, the change for the gathering, the advantage in the.
Um. Grants and profits update, there will be a meeting um this Wednesday, the first sort of. Uh meeting for double day, they got that going, they hope to be on the ground soon um with the work for the. Um creatures and wing walls, the final steps in that. Um Cindy, you ever do you want to set up on your rest rate?
Um I could, I I will let you know that Richardson Windows had a bout with COVID, go among all of its employees, so they had to close the shop temporarily. We have both to have the windows completely in by March thirty first, we will be pushing that a couple of weeks into April now because. Had to close for a couple of weeks, but um everything seems to be going well, and we're still on target to having the windows back in. Before the Cooperstown Central School show.
I will comment on the fan window of the landing, that's just gorgeous.
This actually filmed by a different.
It was.
It would be a company.
Yeah, but it was done by contractors, no work.
Yeah. You want to comment on? It's salt shed or?
I I have no additional information on the salt shed, I think everybody's got a chance to be it.
A great parking garage, I know. Yeah.
Uh it says it is complete and reimbursement has been submitted.
Yay. And Grove Street, we were just holding off there because we have the curve that got damaged at some point at different parts of the project, we'll see about that. Um I know there's been correspondence on Hoffman Lane Pioneer Alley, so.
Yeah, our hope had been, you may remember last month, to submit for a big federal grant to actually. Do the work that we have the engineering study out for for Hoffman Lane to Pioneer Alley, it became clear. About two weeks ago, I think, that that just wasn't in the works, that we are not far enough along in that process to have. The solid numbers and the information that we need, but it did um give Delta sort of a bit of a push, so they've been. Um ramping things up and hope to have plans to show to you all um to get. Everyone in in on, in the relatively near future.
So we didn't really accept the whole finance report, did we? And I think it's a good motion to approve, uh Cindy, second by. Matt on favor.
Okay, um so minutes are in packet. Um there's just one small correction that I'm seeing, and I just wanted to note it for everyone, it says that there's. Five to seven dollars budgeted for additional planting that Pioneer Park, I'm not sure that that's what you said, I think we were discussing the five thousand dollars that we've documented for. Um the late front buffer strength maintenance, but that was a conversation that we had, just kind of think about, there was a plan that was. Established for planting that Pioneer Park that hasn't sort of been seen through, so just. Having that potentially be a point of limitation, especially if we're moving through the budget. Um. Let's see. Not that there's much else, I mean, I'm happy to, if there's any questions, um I'm happy to. Clarify anything, the only sort of. Point that we've been working on is back to the potential dog park um question of whether or not we actually have. Uh stewardship over that Leland Avenue property. Um because we've been operating under the assumption that it's. School property, because that's what the tax net is, however, according to Mitch, the village has been. Taking care of it for many, many years, and when I spoke to Joe Katz, he was under the impression that during that um. Yeah.
So we have the ease.
So so the easement that I saw is from Clark Foundation.
For that part of the field, but half of that roughly is from the Clark Foundation, the other part's from the school.
Right.
And I remember the school did not feel it could sell it, but for a school to sell, it was a complex process, so we just took an easement over it.
So we do have an easement from the school.
I believe, I believe we do, yeah.
Okay, because I've only ever seen the documentation from the. That's signed by the Clark Foundation. For an easement, and that portion, their portion of that land is is essentially, I mean, it's miniscule, it's like. The usable portion of that land is totally full property. However, it's unclear whether or not, so essentially the question was whether or not we would have to get their permission. To have dogs on the property because of. Their bylaws, but if we have an easement. For that property, then that changes the.
It, I think the easement is for the baseball field.
Yeah.
I'll get, I'll get you, I think I have an easement, it's on record in the county.
Is the Clark Sports Center, or Clark, not Sports Center, the the Clark Foundation easement is for recreational use.
Yes.
Right, so you don't think that the school would use its same language?
I thought they want, they were more interested in being, having it.
That they could use for their.
They wanted it used for baseball.
So the way that we have planned out, if this was a possibility, it would be in addition to a potential baseball field. It would be using that area. Like, it it would, it has sort of taken it in addition to, there would be no sort of taking over that land that was set aside for the baseball field. Um it was just a matter of having to. Figure out whether or not we actually have to ask the school board to change any bylaws or anything like that. Um so, yeah. That was just the discussion that we've had, because I think Lennine this was under the impression that we probably, the village probably also has. St- stewardship over that one, especially if we've been mowing it and using it, or you know, maintaining it.
That would definitely part of the agreement since two thousand thirteen, so there is need of them.
But you don't adversely possess against municipality or school.
Yeah.
And so it's, I mean, we could do it for a hundred years today, but it, the, I I think the key's gonna be to grab that ease.
Okay, yeah, if you have, if you can get that.
Yeah, I I think it's, I'm sure it's on file, I forget the name of the company that filed. They obtained it, Miles or it was a particular real estate company that was hired by the engineers. That did the parking lots, and it was they who got all of the easements, we got easements from the railroad, we got easements from. The bank, we got, so all of those came in.
So i- is the worst case scenario that there's a use on the page?
That's what I gotta look in.
And then you, as long as you're not using it in a way that prevents the dominant use. Even if baseball's never played there again, you can still run it as a game park.
Y- yes, I don't wanna have our, I want, I don't wanna jeopardize it, we may still need to talk to the school.
Right, yes, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um yeah, I mean, it's looking, I have some sort of document that Joe Katz sent me that has a list of. Everyone that had. Either. Signed an easement or just who was part of this discussion. Uh so yeah, if you could find that, that would be really helpful, and then I can. Move it in there.
You don't find it, Easton?
No, I I just have, I I the. I was just talking to Joe Katz and he was just looking through his files.
Good, if there's no easement, then it's the school.
Right, I know, yeah, so.
But I think there is an easement, I remember discussing that with the school board, the Miles and whatever group it was.
Yes, yes.
You need to go down with them, you need the school board.
So in this list, I'm not sure what.
Gotcha, I gotcha.
I have the school board listed, it's just in a whole, you know, I think it was present. Okay, um I don't think that there's anything else that in the sort of other business, it was sort of suggested. For an additional appointment for the park board.
I saw that, and yeah, so there is an open.
Randy, yeah.
Oh, no, no, he, oh, he wasn't at the meeting, I mean, he was, he was suggested.
He was totally partly suggested by every person.
All in tolls.
We just.
Yeah, okay.
Very much appreciate all the work that we've done, uh so pending his interest. Yeah. Um yeah, that's all I got for both of them in this question.
Yeah, any questions, all right, motion to approve the parks committee for them.
So.
By Matt, second by. Joe on favor. Uh community and environment.
All right, so first, a grants update, you may recall our last meeting, that we approved potentially applying for three federal grants in the month of February. So I told you that the one for Hoffman Lane Pioneer Alley was a no-go. The one for the fire department was a no-go, because there's still nothing for information yet, although the hope is that we can apply for that one. The one we did apply for is this um historic renovation past three hundred grand, so we'll see. How it goes, the idea is that the village, the applicants, if we receive um approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. We would be able to um facilitate private building owners making improvements to support energy efficiency. And the conversion to renewable sources, so fingers crossed, I'm sure it would be very competitive. I'm sure it was a very competitive cycle, um but it was also a very short grant window, so. Hopefully, um they will look favorably upon that, they intended to make fourteen awards. So that's the grants update, the other piece of information that I think is incredibly good news has to do with electricity. That you may also remember that we. But you may also remember that we had approved drafting an RFP to secure an electricity broker. To represent us in obtaining bids for electricity. And I and Ellen and others have spent countless hours looking for a draft of such a document, so we didn't have to go to print. And it just doesn't seem to exist. And so today, finally in preparation for this meeting, I found the Office of General Services at New York State. To get their take on why I couldn't find this and to ask if they had one. And I found this nice man in their energy department who told me exactly why one doesn't exist. His advice is that we buy our electricity from NISIC, which is what Oscego County does and the town of Oscego does. Because they are regulated by the Public Service Commission and will, in his opinion, have the lowest rate available to us. Because they're a public utility and they could not actually respond to a bid if one were issued. Um, we can, we can forego the broker, we can forego the bid, we can forego the RFP. Um, and look toward our public utility.
And one of the reasons that historically we had used a broker was because we wanted to try and, we were committed to green energy. But as you all know, we've signed a contract with Burke Solar, so we are. Um, have a secure solar energy source, so, which would offset NISIC. And the other thing, and it was something that we brought up over the years, New York is actually a lot of NISIC power, it's hydro power.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially up here.
Yeah, especially up city, so.
So we don't need to do that, I don't think we need to rescind that, um, but we can move forward with, with, um, speaking with NISIC about them becoming our supplier.
Right.
Any questions, comments on?
Yeah, just the Basset project, I, I, you saw the, what are the next steps, anything happening on the Basset project?
Yeah.
How did?
We don't, we have not received another application, we would be the first to know if we. Yeah.
They're working on it. I, I have a question about the Basset project that I, well, I'm unable to get an answer to. If the purpose of the Basset project is to have more housing available at Basset's disposal. Um, why haven't they taken advantage of the fact that there is a partially empty, brand new apartment facility? In, in, in the town within walking distance of the hospital? I mean, I'm, I'm.
What a new.
Head just.
It's, that's over half rented already.
Half rented, a little over half rented. My point being, even if they think the end result of the April Road might be a little bit cheaper for them for square foot, which I don't think it will be by the time all of this is done. If they're so desperate for housing, why don't they grab what's available?
I think, cause they don't, my speculation, and I, I'm not privy to the specifics of that. But I do have had a lot of interface with the project. Um, I think there are individuals who are supporting it and may not be willing to just pay rent to a third party. Um, this would be pro, this would be a structure that's owned by Basset. Templeton, right, and. It would be under their control and they would decide who's going in and they wouldn't be in the open market.
I hear you, but they, they, they need apartments now, there are apartments here that they're foregoing, I don't, I don't understand that.
I don't know that they need them immediately, they need them immediately. Well, I mean, that's a perspective.
Property within the village.
Yeah, they just purchased some more.
Yeah. And houses that are rented, yeah, with. Alright, so we did, we approved community and environment, right?
Yeah.
No, we did not, okay, motion to accept the community and environment meeting minutes?
So.
I, I'm sorry, it was, oh, Matt, it's Cindy the second, all in favor?
Was the, uh, the parks board minutes, Randy did in fact answer me that he's very.
That's great, alright, I will, um, ask for a motion to approve my appointment of Randy Smith to the Parks Board. By, um, Cindy, second by Hannah, on favor?
Alright.
Um, please let him know that he needs to come in and sign up with Jenna's, make it official. Alright, moving on, you're now at Water and Sewer Board.
Not a lot to report, and the, both the, the staff at both the water and sewer plants are doing a very good job there. The population, I did one, one item there, it's kind of interesting to note, I learned something that's. When a vehicle hit the fire hydrant and severed it at the intersection of Vesley and, and Main Street. It has a breakaway fixture on it, so you don't get this guy.
Brain guys.
It, it, it just snapped off perfectly, they said, Tommy said they repaired it with dispatch and, uh, without incident, so that's, that's good. We do have, um, uh, four weldings are back on the agenda, um. They, um, they remained, uh, they, they still had a, um. A leak, uh, or, or a bill for a portion of, of the water they used during the time they had the extended leak. And there is, um, there was a discussion of, uh, how much further, uh, would be, their, their bill could be reduced. On the sewer portion and the recommendation was, um, that they, uh, they be forgiven in three hundred and five dollars and fifty cents on their current bill. That's.
So there's a motion?
Isn't, isn't to lose it too, no, that's what they're going to pay.
They're heard of.
That's the price they'll pay for that current story.
So motion by Joe, second by. Cindy, all in favor?
Alright.
And I think.
There was, no, there was one more, um, if you recall at our January meeting, we, um. We approved a reduction in the sewer bill for the property of seventy-three April Road. Um, and the next day. After consulting with the office and gathering more info, uh, we received additional information. So there has been no, um, rate reduction in the sewer bill, and let me give you some of this information on that. This is, uh, it's in its own, are you ready? Super district. It's within the village, but it is, has its own wealth, so the way we gauge our sewer usage, and of course, is whatever use of water is then. Built at a sewer rate, this could never be done, this does not actually have. Direct access to our sewer main, cause there is no main that goes up that route, so the, uh. Property owner at the time, nineteen ninety-two, so thirty years ago, put in his own sewer pipe. With an easement across adjoining property as well as an easement with the village to connect. Um, just below our old water tower to our sewer line. So it became difficult to, how do you ascertain exactly what it was, and this rate was set in, it appears it was never increased from about nineteen ninety-two. When the village administrator at that time, Dick Lynn, set the rate. And, um, it is a flat rate because obviously there's no way to ascertain usage. So when the request had come in, it was thought, well, that does seem high, the flat rate is a hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents per quarter. So sixty-two dollars, forty-five cents a month, we're not talking high finances here, but he said it's only a four-bedroom house. Well, if that line. And that rate actually, at, at the time in nineteen ninety-two, there was an additional. Building being served, which, and I think that building is still being served, but the land was subdivided, so. If there's an issue, the, the issue is with the current owner of that property because, um, they are getting. Um, their sewer rate paid by the adjacent homeowner, property owner. Um, so it does serve much more than four people and as far as we, they're four bedrooms and, um, as far as we can ascertain. This has been the same rate and there has not been an increase for thirty years, so even though we just last month increased water and sewer rates, it does not reflect this. Because this is a separate district, so at this time, it appears we should, um. Note this and note that really this is a excellent rate for sewer service for the village.
So the discussion previous to this was that there was gonna be, we were gonna factor in four unit home.
Four bedroom home and it would have reduced the bill by, um, about seventy-some dollars a quarter. It was, um, you know. So divide that by three, um, it would reduce it about twenty dollars a month, maybe.
So there've been people getting free sewers for decades.
Hmm, well, it's not, it is a black rate.
No, I, I thought you said this was also covering all the properties.
It is, it is.
They were until there were increases and they.
All part of the one property.
It was the McGowan, it was the McGowan property, but then when the swatling purchased the home, the McGowans would change the other piece. And by, the only one party is getting the bill, but it serves both places. So it seemed more equitable to have those two owners, the busy McGowans for the. Garage building and the swatlings for the home, work out the payment between the two.
But at this point, I will make a motion that the special sewer rate maintain, be maintained at the flat rate of one eighty-seven thirty-five per quarter. For that property.
Well, second.
Second by Cindy. All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Ironically, with the planning board discussed, please, subdivision may recognize this potential problem, but I don't think anyone can go any further into it.
All we did was make sure that they were, um. Accommodating both.
Yeah.
The sewer, both the leads in terms of easements and access to that. I, the other buildings on April Road are not, um, what's their status with?
They're accepted. And the, and the one closest down is tied into our waters where.
That was a move all.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, so motion to accept the Water and Sewer Board report? By Cindy, second by Joe, all in favor? Um, in business, we need to adopt the village election resolution establishing following place and hours of March twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, the village election.
There is a typo, yeah, I changed it for the actual notice of date.
Yeah, later. Um, alright, with that correction, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
By Matt, second by Cindy, all in favor?
Alright.
Upcoming, um, budget workshops, we have March first and March ninth as budget workshops, that's this Wednesday and I. Believe it's the.
Thursday.
Thursday and next week from five to six thirty. Um, we still have on our calendar March twenty-second as the joint meeting with the town of Oscego, an informational meeting at the. School cafeteria from seven to nine P M. And the other items are on the, we'll have our breakfast with the board on March twenty-seventh, the same day as our trustee meeting. Is there anything else, if not, we can, the meeting can be adjourned and those five of us. Who participated in the board of assessment review need to stay and reassess those two cases. Your motion to move them? So you're, I, I, second by Cindy, all in favor?
Alright. Give me movie of the fish, so that's people don't really carry. But when I, I'm not spending the afternoon after I get back.